All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon and welcome to this hearing of the Budget and Finance Committee for Monday, August 3, 2015. I'm Paul Krikorian, Chair of the Committee, and I'm joined by my colleagues, councilmembers Englander, Blumentfeld, and Kretz, and we're willing that we're ready to begin. This is going to be a lot briefer agenda than I think a lot of you might guess, looking at it. Members, first of all, I'd like to propose as consent candidates, let me just make sure I can, items two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11. So unless members object to any of those or would like questions answered about any of them, we can take those up on consent. Mr. Kretz? Mr. Englander, you good? So while we're checking on those, we will be taking, we'll be taking item number one, the closed session matter, at the conclusion of our agenda. Mr. Blumentfeld, any issues on those consent?
No, sorry.
Good? Okay. Then, seeing no objection, the items that I just specified, two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, are deemed approved on consent. And, no, I'm sorry, there's some note in files. The recommendations are approved by the Committee. So that brings us then to item number three, and we have a number of cards on item number three. Members, it's my intention on this just to hear some comment, hear a general overview, and then we'll just go ahead and continue the matter and hold it in committee unless anyone has a contrary desire. So why don't we go ahead and hear first from the public on this. Our first card is Veronica Perez, followed by Jane Taguchi. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Veronica Perez, representing Keep Neighborhoods First, a coalition of neighbors, tenants, and affordable housing proponents who are concerned about the short-term rentals and the detrimental effect they are having on L.A.'s communities. Thank you, councilmen, for recognizing that more time and study is needed before the city takes action on this issue. We understand the city's desire to collect TOT from short-term rental hosts. However, this must be taken up in conjunction with the overall short-term rental policy. This is too important to do piecemeal. In Los Angeles today, it is illegal to rent your home for periods shorter than 30 days in our One, our Two, and our Three zones. Unfortunately, the city has only been able to selectively enforce violations of these rules. The true victims of the new sharing economy are L.A.'s communities themselves. Bad actors are renting out entire homes, condos, and apartments, turning them into de facto hotels, exacerbating a housing shortage that is already one of the worst in the nation, as you all know. Revolving doors of strangers weave in and out with little regard to neighborhoods, bringing more traffic, noise, trash, and parking concerns to already dense neighborhoods. We urge the city to craft effective regulations that are workable and enforceable to help curb this problem and stand up for L.A.'s neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Taguchi, followed by Roy Semen. Good afternoon.
Hi. My name is Jane Taguchi. I've been a resident of Silverlake for 19 years. I love living in my neighborhood. But over the past 14 months, a shift has happened that's changed the character of my community for the worse. A five-bedroom house across the street from me was purchased and turned into a pseudo hotel, which is illegal. It's a short-term rental that's advertised on Airbnb, FlipKey, VRBO, TripAdvisor, and HomeAway. The house is now a mini hotel, bringing vacationers, noise, taxis, Uber cars, parking and traffic problems on my narrow and hilly street. There was even a loud fraternity party and a corporate retreat with a caterer. Strangers are coming and going once a van full of people want to unload their luggage in my driveway. I don't feel safe or comfortable anymore. Normally, you could talk to your neighbor and try to resolve the matter, which I did. But in retaliation, they took me to civil court. They lost the case. They harassed me and my neighbors, making it clear they do not want to follow the law. Unfortunately, I've heard this story repeated all over the city and in other cities, in neighborhoods like Echo Park, Venice, Hollywood, Hollywood Hills, downtown L.A., cities like San Diego, San Francisco, and Santa Monica. It's like neighbor versus neighbor because the city of Los Angeles, for some reason, is not able to enforce this law. I feel the city's method of non-enforcement is contributing to an alarming loss of regular residents. These rental platforms are building their businesses to capture more and more illegal short-term rental listings and are doing it now before the law changes to prohibit it, making it more difficult to enforce. But I have the answer. It's very simple. The rental platforms should provide the information necessary to help the city enforce these new laws, whatever they may be. I ask that you stand up and protect our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Roy Semen, followed by Joanne Ivannikgarb.
Good afternoon, committee members. Thank you for your time. My name is Roy Semen. I am a research and policy analyst with the L.A. Alliance for a New Economy. I conducted a research, produced a report, rather, that came out March 2015, analyzing the effects of Airbnb on rent and the kind of affordable housing crisis that we have here in Los Angeles. I just wanted to kind of get some comments out on this policy that we're kind of looking at in front of us right now. Before getting into the specifics, I wanted to kind of reemphasize some of the key findings from that study. You know, we found that there were approximately 7,300 whole units in the city of Los Angeles that were listed through Airbnb. Those are thousands of units that we cannot afford to give up, given the tight housing crunch that many renters here in the city, you know, are feeling with regards to their rents continuously increasing. Furthermore, we also found that close to 90% of revenue, particularly from Airbnb, was generated by whole-unit rentals. So that is really the bread and butter of where the short-term rental industry is generating its profits. It is not spare bedrooms. It is not couches. So that's really where that's coming from. You know, taking a look at what's before us today, I want to applaud the fact that we're taking a slow and measured approach to really crafting something that's comprehensive. Again, piecemealing this effort, I don't think, has been effective in other cities. I don't think it'll be the effective approach here. So I want to urge kind of a slow and steady and very comprehensive and very thorough approach to making sure that we are really assessing the total impact, particularly in the neighborhoods that are most, with the highest concentrations of these listings, places like Venice, Hollywood, Silverlake have hundreds, if not, you know, thousands of these units that are on the market that are effectively off the rental market. And I think that it's a very simple supply and demand equation here. When you remove a commodity from the market, the price of that commodity increases. And we're in a situation here in Los Angeles where we can't afford that. Thank you.
Thank you. And as of the moment, my final speaker is Joanne Ivannikgarb. Are there any other cards? No? Okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Joanne Ivannikgarb. I'm from West Hills Neighborhood Council, and I'm also a budget advocate. Let me just say, let me just start with that if I wanted to live by a hotel or motel, I would have purchased a house by the Marriott or the Hilton Hotel in the Warner Center. There has to be some way to prevent an individual or business from buying a home intended for a single family to be a revolving door for transient visitors, not to mention the potential profits that are untaxed. There are hotels going up all over the city, downtown, there's hotels constantly being built. We don't need a home to become the local motel or possibly notel motel. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for those of you who came to provide comment. Members, Mr. Bonin has been one of those who has really been leading the way on kind of some of the policy development issues around this. And I know each one of you has also spoken about some of the policy matters involved with short-term rentals. There are obvious budget implications of collection of the TOT, potential impact of that collection on hotel TOT, and a variety of other budgetary implications. But it seems to me that we may not want to take any action in this committee until we've done further work on the policy development side of it. If you wish, we can hear an update from the CAO on where we are with this. But my inclination would be to hold this in committee and have further discussion on the policy side. But I leave it to your discretion. Mr. Blumentfeld.
Well, one question about the mayor included revenues for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund coming from presumably this action, this taxation. So I'm kind of curious how that plays with, how our non-action at this point would play with the mayor's proposed budget and how that all fits together.
Melissa Krantz, Office of the CAO, that appropriation to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, it will not be made until there is an agreement in place.
But it was assumed in this year's budget?
That is correct. There was an additional instruction to hold off placing that particular amount in the trust fund until further action takes place in terms of coming to an agreement, a collection agreement with Airbnb to realize that extra $5 million.
So does that mean that a consequence of inaction for six months means that there's half as much in the Affordable Trust Fund?
You know, I'm not familiar with the total appropriation to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Well, is it, I mean, how much is what there, there's a year, it was adding for $10 million for a year, then for only six months, then presumably that means $5 million.
Excuse me. Good afternoon, councilmembers. Madeline Rackley with the CAO. It is my understanding that $5 million of the $10 million that was appropriated to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund was linked to the TOT in some way. The other $5 million is separate funding. So $5 million that we are talking about here would be affected by the decision that you would make. And yes, obviously, that was an estimate, but any, you know, change in the implementation or collection of that would probably reduce the amount collected. But again, it was an estimate, and so we really won't know the exact amount until we start collecting it. So...
But that's based on the assumption, was assuming...
Assuming full-year collection.
Assuming that if we're going to start this taxation, when? Right away?
That was the expectation. If you look at the financial impact statement, it's assuming that there would be 38.5 million generated in gross receipts from TOT and that that would correspond to $5 million in TOT revenue.
So if we delay by six months, then we just want to have our eyes open, that means $2.5 million will be not going to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
You know, I'd have to look at the instruction, but I believe it was, the $5 million was pending in agreement. That would probably something we'd have to address whether, once the agreement's in place, that $5 million would be placed in the fund. The $5 million is not TOT revenue being deposited in the fund, rather, is just the appropriation of general fund receipts, which is commingled with other general fund receipts. So once that action...
It's not a diversion of money. It's an assumption difference. So we mean, we could still put $5 million in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
You could.
The general fund is short.
Exactly.
It's short based on the assumptions that were made by $5 million or $0.5 million.
That is correct.
Yeah. And as with any other budget assumption that we make, some are more speculative than others. The assumption built around TOT that's currently not being adequately collected, it could be low, it could be high, it could be, it would always have been subject to budgetary adjustments during the course of the year and judgments that this committee and the council will have to make in how to appropriate funds. But this, I don't think was ever intended to be some lockbox arrangement by which there was going to be a certain amount of TOT that was going to fund affordable housing. And if we didn't get that TOT, we weren't going to fund the affordable housing. We could fund it from any number of other different sources if this weren't to happen. I'm going to ask Ms. Kelfian to speak to that.
Right. I just wanted to clarify, the $10 million you're referring to was the amount that the mayor had proposed in his budget. $5 million of that was general fund, and $5 million was based on the short-term rentals. So when the council took action, this committee and the council took action, there was just a slight change that was made. The $5 million from general fund remained, and then the remaining $5 million, because there was no agreement yet on the short-term rentals, it was changed so that that money would only be appropriated when it was realized. So it wouldn't leave a hole in the budget of $5 million if none of that funding was realized during the fiscal year. So, and as was stated, it was an estimate, and if it still comes in later...
Then it's not just a budget, it's not just going to sort of be absorbed in the budget. It really will have direct impact on the Affordable Trust Fund?
It could, but as Chairman Krikorian said, that the funds could be allocated to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund at any point during the year. That aspect of it was just assumed that if this agreement came forward, then up to $5 million could be allocated to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. But it was done in a way so that it wouldn't cause the general fund to come up short.
And it was done that way precisely because of the possibility that there might not be any agreement at all, and that the policy choice the council might make is to simply enforce against every illegal short-term rental unit in Los Angeles and not have an agreement. Or the policy choice might be to have a very robust agreement that involves collection of TOT by all of, you know, a regulated, well-regulated industry, or any number of other policy choices that would result in a variety of different revenue conclusions. And that's why we didn't do anything to make sure that that appropriation of affordable housing funds was dependent upon what the outcome of those policy choices would be, because we couldn't possibly know what the outcome of those policy choices would be. Mr. Kretz?
Well, in fairness, when we did this, I made the assumption that we were really allocating $5 million for affordable housing out of the general fund. I think the purpose of the other $5 million, as recommended by the mayor, was to drive us towards accepting Airbnb as it is. And so by doing that, by not doing that, we would have $5 million less. But I never assumed those $5 million, because I certainly question the way we operate with Airbnb and, in general, the whole sharing cheating economy. I think it's not any secret that I'm not a fan. But I'm not assuming at all that we have an obligation to do a $5 million additional fund and that we need to take that out of the general fund. I just assumed it was a $5 million allocation for affordable housing for this given year.
Mr. Englander? Just weigh in, just a little bit. First and foremost, I couldn't agree more with the dialogue and the conversation. And I am a fan with an asterisk of the shared economy, under the certain conditions and restrictions that work within, regionally that work in different communities. And that's what's being discussed right now in Plumb, and those very policies. I think this would actually put the cart before the horse, to go forth and say, let's go ahead and look at this revenue before we've set off a path of having the policy in place. We've got to do that. Those discussions are taking place now. And in fact, if we had an agreement right now, there could be a legal issue that if we had an agreement in place right now to accept any dollar value, and then later on decided to come up with policies and conditions... decided to come up with policies and conditions and restrictions and set a policy in motion, which one would come first? And we'd have to adhere to an existing agreement first and say, well, we're going to have to wait until that expires to accept now revenue based on a new policy. I think it makes sense that we wait until that comes through the full committee and council process in terms of a policy that works, and then look at this in terms of revenue. And I agree, and it was a very good point, that this was put in the budget as a revenue stream, not necessarily looking at the expenditure side, as a push to say, get something done as it relates to the policy, to get this to the table. So I understand why that was done that way, and hopefully, we can get something done pretty soon. And I support the chair's recommendation to hold this in committee until the policy is ready to go and then maybe bring them both concurrently, I think would make sense. But in the event, I'd support that.
All right. Any other questions for the moment? We -- okay. Then we'll go ahead and hold this matter in committee, and thank you very much for your work on it. We'll see you again. And -- all right. Are there any general public comment cards? Are there any -- okay. Sorry, folks, you got to keep the noise level down as you exit the room, please, because we're still doing business. Are there any comment cards on item number one, our closed session?
No cards.
All right. Then public comment on that matter is closed, and we will now take that matter up in closed Are there any other matters before the committee? Seeing none, we are adjourned.